It's a special meeting, I'll call it to order, January 31st, 2022, and this is the American Rescue Plan Work Group. And what we want to do today is to turn the floor, oh, approval of the minutes? I found the minutes to be fine.
I agree.
Okay, so the minutes can stand as written. And the first item of the agenda is to turn the floor over to Amy Merriweather, Finance Director, to kind of go over the final rule, because it did have quite a few changes to the interim rule and to kind of set the new, there's a new groundwork for us to follow.
So I took a look, as you said, at the final rule, the majority of the majority, the majority of the final rule included basically clarification of the rules, so there were no category changes, it's still the same categories. They provided definitions that they didn't spell out previously, like low, moderate income, what they consider low, moderate income. They took a look at some items like medical costs, like what can we, what we can reimburse for, whether the person has to be insured, uninsured. They provided some examples. They went through items like the housing projects, because there was a lot of discussion around those. And initially, you had to be in a qualified census tract, which we are not. So they did give some additional information on that, where you don't have to be in a qualified census tract, but you need to be able to support the determination of why why that area was disproportionately impacted. And you have to do your own research and data, you cannot just survey residents, that doesn't count. You have to do like an actual assessment of the impact with a data analysis, research, things of that nature. So they spelled out some of those things. And then the major changes, which have all been talked about, is the revenue loss. So we can have a $10 million allowance for the revenue loss, where we can use that 10 million, or in our case, 7 million, because that's all we received. We can use that 7 million for general government services. They also added a section for capital. And you could tell that the way that they wrote this section, capital is definitely going to be discouraged. They, you still have to determine what need you're trying to make better, and how you're going to make it better. So it doesn't fall under the revenue loss of general government services, where we wanted to use it for, say, some parks, capital, or things of that nature. We would still have to show why we need the parks infrastructure, for example. Was it overuse? We have to be able to actually put data to the need and determine what we're trying to fix that was caused by COVID. They also, for the capital, the threshold for capital is $5,000, so it's a super low threshold. And anything that we do under capital, we have to follow the federal and state rules. So for example, like the procurement rules, they have different rules than we do, we would have to follow their rules. And then they also put into place anything for capital, where if you're going to spend over $1 million, it has to go through a justification process. So you have to describe the harm or the need that is going to be addressed. You have to explain why a capital expenditure is appropriate. And you have to compare against alternative capital expenditures that could be made in place of a capital project. So as you can tell, just from that alone, you can tell that they're trying to make it very difficult to use capital, because they don't want to see you use capital. They really want you to see you put the money towards services that are directly impacting COVID recovery. So those are kind of the highlights of what I read, and I will open it up to any questions.
I just want to ask two questions. On the capital expenditures, I must have read this incorrectly, because when I, the section on capital expenditures in the, well, into CCM, it says it clarifies funds can be used, they must be related and proportional to the impact identified. But then they say no written justification required if it's under $1 million. I read that.
Under $1 million, over $1 million, you have to do the written justification.
Does that mean any capital item under $1 million is good to go?
You still have to determine the COVID negative impact and what it's solving.
Okay, that, I missed that, like, right, wasn't that clear? I don't know why, it wouldn't not be clear, but that's how I read that one.
So Amy, that's in the federal guidance, not in the CCM summarization?
Yes, that is in this 400-page document.
Well, there should be the same, obviously, one is taken from the other.
You would hope, but I mean, that's the challenge with the summary is, what does it summarize?
Well, I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking in the in the federal one under the, yeah, what I, so, so that's one thing. And then the other question that I, a big question I have is this revenue loss, because we didn't have that before as an option. So what does that mean in terms of, just in general, what we could do with the money? We could just say, you know, we're going to use it for anything we want, and we can justify anything we want to spend it on?
You don't have to have justification for the revenue allowance, but you have to use it on government services. So you can use it on additional social services, additional public safety, but it has to be service in nature, not capital in nature.
Okay.
Lisa, you're muted, why don't you just go?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Amy, on the government services, they, in the, in the Treasury document, they do say it can be used for infrastructure and roads as part of government services. So there is some capital permitted?
It has to already be part of your operating budget. So things like, like that $200,000 that we have for paving, the plow truck, the cruisers, the admin vehicles that we just put in. Those are okay, because they're already part of our operating, but anything outside of that has to be justified.
So that would, what about non-recurring capital? CNR, that's in our CIP, it's part of our operating budget, no?
Well, maybe the 416, 250, but I think that would be a stretch. Because we're not using it for the same thing year after year.
So is that, where is that in the final rule? Is there a special section? You can, I can ask you later, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Thanks.
Is there a bigger expansion on using it for like police and stuff like that?
Part of the operating budget, right?
Yeah, police is a general government service, you could use it on that.
And we don't need to justify that, Amy, we can just do it?
Right.
So spending on government services, schools, roads, help, admin, environmental?
As long as it's in the operating budget.
Provision of fire, okay.
Again, remember, these guidelines are written for tens of thousands of municipalities across the country that are organized in different ways, right?
So you didn't see, Amy, reading this, you didn't see this as a big expansion to what we, the interim rule at all?
I saw it as an expansion on the revenue side, that we can use it for anything government-related, basically for any of the normal services that we do, but for the capital, no.
Okay. Okay, responding to Violet.
I have a question, Amy. So how would, if we're limited to taking it mostly into, like, through our operating budget, how does that impact, like, what we were planning on doing? Like, would we use that budget process to then have that grant process for the small businesses and the 501(c)(3)'s? How would that work?
Sorry.
Go ahead, Amber.
So I'm, like, I know that you guys were looking, I think, in past meetings at setting up, like, the grant project. So how would, if you took all the money into revenue under that $10 million standard that you're allowed, how would you affect, how would that affect providing grants to the small businesses and the nonprofits?
It kind of just depends on how the work group decides if they want to. So if they want to use, say, that $250,000 for the nonprofits, they can. And then they can earmark the rest for general government services if they wanted to.
Let me ask a different way, it doesn't change anything, Amber, because it's a different allowable use. But, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the grants to the 501(c)(3)'s doesn't have anything to do with the government expenditure. That's an expansion on what we're allowed to do, but we're still allowed to do the 501(c)(3) help under the original documents.
Right, the category didn't change.
That didn't change, right.
So we could still do grants to the nonprofits and the small businesses?
Yes.
Okay.
We just, we have an expanded option, where before, we couldn't use this to pay for police officers and mental health care. We only could do the grants.
Well, essentially, we could spend it on whatever we would spend through our operating budget, right?
Correct.
Right.
That piece wasn't allowed before, yes.
Okay.
So were you asking, Amber, if, to do the program under, as part of the budget, or just do it on the side, like we were?
I'm just asking, how would that make, would it impact how we were planning on handling that process at all for the nonprofits and the small businesses? It sounds like no.
That's what it sounds like, okay.
And that would not, those determinations wouldn't have anything to do with our, our budget process. But if we took some of this money into, essentially, our revenue, that could have, that could come into play with our, our budget this year, right? If we use it to fund police, if we use it for some of these other expenditures?
In the sense that we use it to offset something in the operating budget, and then we turn around, and instead of enjoying those savings, if we allocate it somewhere else, yeah, I think that, that's where you're going. Or if we, I mean, I mean, we could use it for the, the community grants we have in our operating budget currently as well.
Yeah, so CCM is actually having another webinar, I think, the day of this week or something like that. So one thing that they weren't clear about is supplementing versus supplanting the budget. So are we going to use any of this for relief, or does it have to be in addition to? So that's one thing I do want to get clarification on.
Could you say that a different, I didn't really, the, the revenue loss money?
Yeah, so can we use the money to basically offset our budget? Or does it have to be in addition to our budget?
So we would keep our regular operating budget the way it is, and then this would be on top of it for additional services that we want to provide, as opposed to using it to pay for things that we would have already paid for and realizing some kind of savings, right? I guess, I guess that's kind of what I was trying to get at, is.
Right, so that guidance isn't really clear, or maybe I just missed it, it was a 400-page document, but I do want to ask them that on Thursday. So if we paid, say, $1 million and paid for our police using this money, could we then use that $1 million to go do a capital project? And that I'm not sure about, I'm not sure if we're allowed to supplant the budget.
Right, because essentially, you'd be taking then our budget savings and using that to fund a capital project that we couldn't use this money for to fund, right?
Exactly.
Right. So I guess the capital projects in here that are allowed are just the ones that were very, like, tightly kind of enumerated, like the sewer and water and broadband, and it looks like there's some infrastructure, like HVAC type, those types of capital projects are allowed, but.
So if capital projects are allowed, you just have to have the negative impact and then what it's fixing, you just need to have the justification for it.
Even for a sewer project or a broadband, or I think, are those different criteria?
No, those are, those are different categories, they have their own set of criteria. I'm just saying, to use the revenue loss money, we would still have the justification.
Yeah, this whole sewer concept is really interesting, because the taxpayers have not paid for sewers in this community, as far as I can remember, right, and Lisa checked me on that, but the sewer users and the future sewer users pay for sewer projects, and that's a, well, I think people get confused. Those are two separate and distinct budgets, and for people that turn off our budget meetings at nine o'clock at night, when I'm reading the motions, that's like the fourth or fifth motion, where we approve the sewer use fund, right? But those are not taxpayer funds.
Except when we do it for a municipal government building.
Yeah. But I mean, in terms of the lines.
Those are essentially special use funds, right?
Yeah, when you lay a sewer line, the, the users that are going to benefit from that line are assessed, and then they pay a hookup fee, right, and that's, that, as long as I've been alive, that's how sewers are done. So it's, it's interesting that the sewer concept has come up, so.
Sean, are you proposing that we install sewers in the whole town?
No. No, I'm not, I mean, again, I, I think it's a, you've got a fairness issue, I, I think, which is, I think, important to all of us in terms of, you know, folks have paid throughout the years to hook up, and then future folks are waiting, and, you know, they're going to get assessed and hook up, and if you disrupt that natural cycle, how do you, how do you choose who gets and who doesn't get? I also have a philosophical issue with this money, this is not infrastructure money, right? This is, this is supposed to be for COVID relief, and, you know, it's interesting, it's, I'll be honest with you, and again, I run the risk of, of maybe upsetting some folks, but I was really disappointed in the public hearing, and that I didn't hear one request for actually helping folks impacted by COVID. You know, with food insecurity, or rents, or businesses, or nonprofits. And I'm not saying the requests weren't nice or noble causes, but I, I was honestly kind of surprised with our community that there wasn't more around helping elderly or folks with food insecurity, or, you know, or otherwise, which, again, I think we've all seen, you know, mental health issues, otherwise through COVID, I was really surprised that that didn't come up.
Well, it didn't come up as much, I mean, I'll, I'll stick in for like the Housing Authority, which, you know.
Right, that, that was the one that did, yes.
Right.
But the pickleball courts and everything else.
And I know when we talk about what's on the, the list, the Housing Authority has been listed, and I mean, Jackie is familiar with them, and I'm the liaison now, and you know, they, they do have a lot of needs that are COVID expenses that they've incurred. They have, you know, residents that are really struggling, because state funding for renters assistance is flat, but their buildings also need a lot of repair, and they have a lot of infrastructure needs that they are really trying to figure out how to fundraise for. And, and so there's, there's a lot of issues there that, that they need some support, and I think have been hit really hard these last couple of years, so we should take a look at that.
Yeah, you're absolutely, you're right, Amber, I had forgotten about the Housing Authority.
But that is, that is, that was like one, you know, that letter took about less than a minute to read, but it's a, it's a big issue.
Yeah, and again, I'm not saying the other cause, the other requests weren't worthy and noble, but I feel like they're in a different bucket, right?
I mean, I wonder if with Parks and Rec, if there is some opportunity with, it just seems like so many people have really used outsides, you know, you're trying to get people to be outside and be physically active, and you couldn't, you know, be inside, and the trails and the parks have taken such heavy use that, you know, if we could somehow make some justification to make some improvements there, even if it sounds like that might be kind of a stretch. I'm also curious, like, I saw in the paper that Canton had already listed what they are going to be spending their money on, and I, I would have to go back and look at that list, but it seemed like some of it, it, it didn't seem like it was all HVAC and sewers.
No, they were building a boat ramp, weren't they, or some, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there seemed to be some, some.
We, yeah, I think we need to be careful with what was in the newspaper versus what's actually gets submitted and spent, right? Because, I mean, I've read news article after news article, crazy things that is implied that that's what people are going to spend on, but to date, I haven't seen those checks written, right, Amy? I mean, I think there's, there's been a lot of speculation, but the finance directors of those communities are ultimately going to sign their name to these projects, and I'll be interested to see what actually gets funded.
Right, well, I think it would be good to keep in touch with those communities similar to ours, to see, you know, as a check and balance, I'm sure you, you guys will do that, you know, to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah.
If I could just quickly fill in on that, so Amy, Melissa, and I have been in more regular contact with our counterparts and Granby and Avon on, on this topic. And then at our monthly Farmington Valley Collaborative Meeting, which is the chief executive officers of the Farmington Valley towns, as well as some of the chief elected officials, we do get together on a monthly basis, and most of those other communities, under the old guidance, they were, they had a lot more flexibility than us, because they were able to demonstrate revenue loss. So some of the areas where they were able to get a little more creative, they were tying back to the revenue loss, but that's what they had shared with us to date.
But now you don't really need to show the revenue loss, because we can just take it into revenue under the $10 million, so it should make it through.
I'm not sure they're able to do the projects they said they were going to do, though, based on what Amy just said, that they're dissuading folks from capital unless they can prove cause, right?
I know, like, this is part of some of my CFO and counterparts. You know, everybody had said in the media, you can use it for parks, you can use it for parks, you can use it for parks. And when I read the guidance, I agreed that I could use it, that we could use it for parks. And Mike from CCM, who has the contacts from the state and the federal level, did come out and talk to the work group, and we did bring up the parks issues, and he said, no, there has to be justification for it. So I actually went back to the finance directors that were going to be using it for parks and shared that with them. And so I think it's, it's an interpretation thing, like, they didn't know. Now they know, so I don't know what they're going to do with that, I don't know if they're going to do it anyways, I don't know if they're going to change their plans, but I think some of it is just interpretation too. And perhaps I am more by the letter than others, but that's where my comfort level is.
Okay.
Well, it also seems like, you know, I think there's things that we need to do, kind of, you know, on a, on a shorter term than, than longer term, right? I mean, like, immediate impacts of COVID, helping to take care of nonprofits and businesses that have been hurt, making sure people that have unreimbursed expenditures for dealing, because all those kinds of short-term, really urgent things, we can move on now. And then as we work through this, then we might get more and more guidance. I mean, we don't have to have it all figured out, you know, next month, or, you know, we could start working on the obvious, immediate needs first, and maybe it will become more clear about things like parks down the road.
Well, again, it goes back to if we can use, then this is just, like, you know, we have a lot of items identified and more to add to the list, but if we do go the revenue, if we are able to go the revenue loss route, it opens up a lot of doors for what, what we're going to fund, correct?
In the operating budget, yes.
And Amy, yeah, I'm asking Amy, right?
Yeah, for services, yes.
Or potentially, you could fund, right, you can fund things in the operating budget, and then use what you're not using for, for other items, right, can't you know?
Well, I don't know, that's the, that's the part that we need clarification on, I don't know if we're allowed to do that with the money.
We also need to be careful that this is a limited supply, and once we pay for it, if we don't have a long-term funding scheme for it, then it becomes a tax issue.
Where no one's going off the cliff, like, we, I think we all agree, there's no cliff.
I'm just saying, right, I mean, again, not suggesting you were going to do that, but again, when folks at home want us to, to spend certain money, we've got to have a long-term funding strategy when this money goes away.
Yeah, agreed. And there was, did you, I just thought I read, is there, there was no expansion on the use for like tourism, or things like that? You know, I don't know what I read that under, I thought I saw that in one of the.
So it's not an expansion, you can identify a disproportionately impacted group, I guess, so like businesses, or restaurants, or things of that nature, and they can, you can fund that. But as far as tourism and economic development, they are absolutely 100%, that's a no. Economic recovery, that's okay, but development, that was a hard no, and that was actually spelled out.
Okay.
So we could do an Eat Simsbury program to help get our resident, or get our restaurants back up on their feet, right? Because it's economic recovery, not a bringing folks to the community from a tourism standpoint, although it might end up being the same thing, but the intent is to help the rest, the restaurants that are, I think we can justify pretty easily, have hurt for the last two years, right?
Right, yeah, so as long as you have the data to identify the restaurants that they were disproportionately impacted, you can go ahead and do a program for the restaurants, yeah. The only caveat is the capital, if restaurants or this impacted group wanted to do any capital, they have to follow the same rules we do.
Interesting, so if we gave $10,000 grants, and they wanted to invest it in their patios, they would have to justify that capital expenditure, not on paper, but be able to if they were audited?
Yeah, but that's an easy one to justify, outdoor space, they referenced in there, so.
Do they have to follow the procurement process as well?
You know, that's a good question.
Because that would make a lot of these very expensive to do as well.
I don't think so, and the only reason why I say that is because I think they're considered a beneficiary, not a subrecipient. I think that they would be okay.
That would just, we would want to clarify that, because we don't want to give a restaurant, you know, somebody $10,000, but then they have to use certain procurement rules, that they get one-third of what they thought they were going to get from a usage standpoint.
Okay. All right, so we discussed the final rule, basically, we can, we'll find out about the revenue loss usage, and from what Amy's saying, we're pretty much in the same boat we were before the final rule came out, as far as how we're going to use it.
From a capital standpoint, yeah, but I think we've got some expanded flexibility on the, on the operating side, yeah.
So, go ahead, who was that?
It was, it's me. I just wanted to bring up just the fact that, you know, if we started helping some of the small businesses now, or some of the nonprofits, would, you know, if we're still trying to figure out what else to spend it on, you know, if you wanted to later on, are you able to circle back to those same organizations? Or if you spend on something now, are you done? You know, what are the rules around that? And just another thing that I think is important to do is that, you know, there are so many requests that are going to come in and different ideas, and if you, if you treat it at sort of a little money here and a little money there, or here, based on sort of, well, as and when people come in and things, I don't know if in the end, we will think that we spent it in the, in the best use for the community, in the town, rather than trying to be a little more thoughtful of the overall piece and how to allocate that out in the beginning, and then allocate it.
Well, I think that's a good point, so, right, like you're saying, so if we spend $250 here, $250 here, $250 here, and then we find somewhere down the road, we want to spend, you know, whatever, and we don't have that left, is that kind of, you know, where, where we're thinking?
Well, yeah, I'm just sort of thinking as a whole, if you look at it as, instead of, you know, sort of like your children at home, if you have, you know, $200, and they can just come to you, you know, can I, for a lollipop, I want this, can I get this? Was the $200 spent in the best way for, I'm just like using a household example, but, you know, if we look at it as, okay, we have the $7 million, and really kind of figure out the the best kind of uses for it as a whole, and how to allocate it out, rather than just saying, okay, well, there's this little thing right now, and then there's this little piece, and this little piece, and then in the end, are we going to say, okay, well, was that whole amount really, did it best serve our community and the most number of residents, and, you know, us as a whole? And so I guess it's just a way to process it all on how to allocate it out, like, what's the process going to be? Rather than like a, an as and when kind of, you know, with a lot of different apps on it, but I guess the limitations kind of make the, the ass a little bit easier to deal with now than, than they were, you know, when we were listening during the public hearings and things, but.
Me, Heather, I see your point, go ahead, Wendy.
No, I was just going to say, I think that is a valid point, and that's, we were talking about the 501(c)(3), and it's like, do we do it now, do we wait to see where we're going? You know, before we do it, do we have the next step kind of thing, that kind of thing, but go ahead, Amber.
I, I was just going to say, I, I agree to an extent, but I also think it is clear that there are nonprofits and businesses that are hurting right now, and for us to sit on this money and wait too long to provide any relief is also not helpful. I mean, the point of the money is to start to get it to, to people that need it, that have, you know, still a lot of expenses related to this pandemic, and a lot of direct, you know, economic hurt. And I, I think that, to the extent that we can make those decisions, we should make those decisions, and then take our time, you know, if we need to, to figure out the rest of it. But I, I don't know that making small businesses and nonprofits that are hurting wait longer.
I actually, so, I.
I actually, so I, you know, I probably miscommunicate because I actually think they need it more than anyone right now. And I I know our small businesses need it and and they could use it now. I guess what I was trying to say with it is, do they, do they potentially need more than than? So right now, if we say, okay, we are going to give out this amount, are we allowed to circle back and and give them out more? Or is it going to, are we going to be told, you already used the the nonprofit and small business allocation? I guess that's where I'm going with it, you know it.
Heather, the the short answer to your question is yes, we can go back. As long as we haven't spent it, we have, yeah.
We talked about that, as Jackie knows ad nauseam. Like, if we get rid of the 250 really fast, we can do another round.
Okay, that's my, that was my concern because it, you know, will, will the businesses and things potentially, maybe we will find they need more and that's.
Yeah.
Which is one of the reasons why, to Amber and yours, and I think Wendy's point, and I'm pretty sure Jackie made it too, and Lisa, and I think everybody has made it, and I'll make it now, is I want to hurry, and I think we should get this grant out for the nonprofits to to exactly see that. Because if we have a massive need that we underestimated, I would like to know that before I start allocating it other places. And when we get it out to the businesses, I would like to know that. Because again, I think there's a lot of noble causes here, but I I do agree that that's one of the top priorities for this money.
Okay.
And we know it's an allowed use. It it is one that is allowed.
And we've got.
Yeah, well, they they have to, the charities have to provide Amy with all the data, right? So if they don't cough it off.
They can't ask if we don't start the process, though.
Right, right. No, no, you've got it, and it's on the agenda for, it's on the, for February.
Again, I think, I think my friend Lisa will be okay with us going out with the grants for the nonprofits because we've gotten legal sign off, we've gotten, you know, we've, I think we've done our due diligence here. I don't think we're putting the town at undue risk as long as we follow our process, right, Lisa? So I think we're, I think we're in good shape there. Again, I think we got some questions on capital and operating and other stuff, and we're gonna take a little bit more time to make sure we got our ducks in a row. And again, I don't think we're exhausting the fund either right now by going out with 250.
No. So let's transition to item three.
Can I just say one more thing, Wendy?
Yeah.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to add one more thing. Um, when we go to the um webinar on Thursday, there's another thing I wanted to ask about too, because we can fund maintenance, which would technically be an operating expense. So some of that smaller maintenance stuff, are we allowed to use the funds for that? Or is that considered capital because it's not paid for by taxes, fees, things of that nature? So that's another thing I'm gonna get clarification on as well.
Could, and could you give an example for like what you, what would fall in that?
Um, so like cybersecurity, things like that. Uh, we would probably put that as an operating budget expense. But right now, we have some of that in our C and R. And to me, that's more operating than capital. So could we use it on things like that, even though, you know, it has a high dollar value? It's not really capital in nature or something that's more like maintenance in nature? If it just happens to have a large value, can we use it for that? And I think the answer is yes, but I just want to clarify before I I say yes. So those are the two things, the supplement, the plant, and then the maintenance items um, that I wanted clarification on. So more to come on those two things.
Hey, Amy, could you ask about maintenance for the parks as well? Because that might be something that we can say, yes, we had so much traffic, but the maintenance would be phenomenal. I think that would really benefit, okay?
Absolutely. I'll ask specifically about that for you.
Good. Okay. So you want to move to number three?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we moved to, we moved to number three. So we could talk about the public hearing feedback, but a lot of the public, we could talk about it. But a lot of, some of the public feedback items are in the list too, right? So um, do we want to just talk about the list and incorporate those items as we go through the list? Or do you want to just kind of take a step back here and provide feedback on the the public hearing? I I'll, my my feeling is, you know, it was, it was specific groups that kind of came to to present their case and and they came out in numbers. Um, and it, you know, well, like as Sean said, maybe they're not specifically tied to COVID relief. But some of them, you know, people might be looking at it as a way to improve the life they've been leaving for two years or or they're looking to get out more. Um, so I kind of just took it like that. And some of them we've, we had heard about because of, like, the Pine Hill issue is not a really an ARPA issue, it's just been an issue. Um, and and they've, working with um, Tom Roy's group, Tom's gonna put out some information. So for all of us, so we can talk about it on an agenda at a board of selectmen meeting because they, there are offers and ways to fix this outside of ARPA, but ARPA would fund it. But then we face the equity issue. Who else is not getting funded for something similar? Um, you know, that that kind of thing. So that was my feeling on that. I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in on the public hearing feedback item or move to the the proposed projects. All right. So so if we move to the projects, um, some of these items, Melissa, you could correct me. Some were in that original list we had. They look a little different here. Um, some were not in the list. Um, it doesn't include like the, some of the newer items. But again, we don't know if we can even pay for them now from what what I'm hearing, unless we go a different route. Um, so I just give everybody an opportunity to maybe ask questions on some of these items and maybe take them off the list as a starting point going forward.
How many years are those two positions for?
Right.
Well, I was gonna ask, yeah, Amy, Matt Curtis talked to me about the Board of Ed positions. And I know he talked to you about preventing the cliff. And he said they were 180 for two people per year. So if we were doing two years, could, you want to explain that one? That was the one that caught my eye.
The what one, the ninth?
The board, the 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 Board of Ed social workers. Because they did, they do express it as a need, and I I believe it's a need, but a million dollar need I wasn't um, familiar with.
I think that was just a placeholder that we put for the town and the Board of Ed. I didn't provide that figure, but it was 180. So it would be through what, the end of 2026? So 2025, 26, that would be four, four years with pay increases, I believe. 180.
Yep, Amy, I can help with that. I did help with this estimate again, just to give us some, again, some, just to start getting to some ballpark estimates on some of these expenditures. So if we were looking to do some, you know, temporary help in this area, it's four full years as well as a fifth additional year because we can expend the funds through 2026. So sort of assuming that the need might exist during the duration of that time period. As Amy said, most likely, the staff members would be um, unionized. So factoring in some general wage increases over the course of that time, um, as well as a small cost for supervision potentially. So again, we were really trying to look at, you know, benefits, salaries, any potential supervision costs. Um, and again, for a four and a half year period for each of the entities. Um, and that was where we came up with that initial estimate, um, not just a one-year estimate.
So what if, but but we would be able to say, we we only want to fund it for two years, right? Like, we don't have to do four years. If we said two years and then you guys have to figure out how you're gonna pay for it ongoing. I mean, that's, that's where Amy, Matt referred to some other, you have another funding source for like the Board of Ed. And then with the town ones, you know, how does, how does that, how do we stop a cliff from that also?
Right, and I think at least on our side, you know, to say that we have certainty that we would need these additional positions indefinitely, I don't think we feel comfortable saying that we would need these positions indefinitely yet. I mean, there's definitely an immediate need. Um, and so again, our thought was is, you know, could we potentially attract, um, you know, some good candidates? If we said, you know, we can make essentially a four, four to four and a half year, you know, interim commitment to you. Beyond that, we're just not sure. Um, and that was sort of our thought with the cost estimate is to estimate for the duration in which we have the ARPA funds available to us. But really, during that time period, evaluating, you know, how are we combating the need that we're seeing as there going to be a continued need? Because then at that point, right, then we would be bringing to you essentially an operational request for a service improvement request if we thought there was going to be some sort of permanency beyond 2026. But again, at this point in time, we're just not comfortable yet committing to say, yes, we think we need these positions forever.
And just getting back to the town social work, is that, has that been a need that we had for a while? Is it just only because of the pandemic? Um, you know, I know the Board of Ed is trying to get one per school, is is their goal? But just for the town, just curious.
Yeah, so ARPA here, and this is something um, that our social services director and and the chief have been working on. And um, as part of the budget process, we'll have more detailed information for you on this. But two of the areas where we've really seen an increase in need are um, youth and family support come through our social services program. But also, um, you know, I think the chief has made um, a very good point on this is that in terms of things like mental health calls for service, substance abuse calls for service, domestic violence calls for service, seeing some changes there as well. And being able to have somebody who could follow up sort of after that initial call for service and and provide resources and contact and follow up after that happened. So um, again, our thought was is, you know, one person who would really focus on those types of calls for service and providing response to people, you know, of all ages, but more so an adult population. Um, and then a second staff member who could really focus on, um, you know, the youth and families. And what's really interesting about this is, you know, when I, when I speak again to my counterparts, um, I was just on a, on a health district call recently. Um, every town is just seeing this. Um, you know, my office sees it every day, you know, the types of calls that we get that I might have seen two or three in a year. We see sometimes every day now, just in terms of people who are really, really struggling. Um, so it's changed very, very much during the pandemic. But again, um, social services and the chief will have some data and we'll, we'll prepare, you know, this more comprehensively for you um, with the upcoming budget process.
Okay. So one more question. So I know, so this would come to us in the budget process. And then do we say, whoops, we'll just pay for it with ARPA? Like, I guess.
That was my recommendation, yeah.
Or we say we don't want to approve it at all, right? Like, I mean, that's the the option.
We have two choices. We can fund it in the regular operating budget, we can fund it through ARPA, or we cannot do, three choices, or we cannot do it.
Or we could do it for less time if we felt, right? Okay. Okay, the therapy dog, we've already talked about. Um, I don't think we're getting a therapy dog. That was one of our first items. Um, but Amy, I think it's still a potential low-cost item.
Yeah, I think they're trying to pursue it, just be a different avenue.
Okay. So so I don't want to hog the floor here because I have a lot of questions, but I want to turn it over to other people who might have questions. So anybody else want to jump in here?
Health district number, um, does that remind me, is that grounded in what they asked for? Or are we just going with a flat 250 there?
Yeah, so that is a placeholder right now. Um, they did put together an initial small list of requests. Um, the thought being very similar to the second round of COVID relief funding that we received is that they'll, you know, prepare very nice, um, you know, budget request for each and every one of the 10 towns. And then they would do a proportional share um, based on our population size. Um, so again, so far, there's a small number of asks, and I'm fairly certain they're going to bring to us, include things like um, a van. So right now, they don't have a fleet. And one of the challenges that they've had is, you know, whether it's for vaccination clinics, et cetera, um, they have had no way to transport um, the supplies, the materials that they need. And so they've been basically borrowing from any town that happens to have like a leftover vehicle before it's sold off at auction, um, which just isn't a good way for them to do, to do business. Um, so there's again, a small list of needs that they have identified that I know we'll be getting um, shortly to bring to you. Um, but again, they are trying to really, you know, flesh out um, in the long term, how they can best, you know, serve our communities. So again, 250 is most likely more than they would need. Um, but it's just for now, sort of a placeholder number. Um, I I wanted to make sure, and I would recommend to you all that we do, um, again, have aside some amount for them, even if we don't ultimately use that, you know, full amount, maybe it's 100,000. But that, again, that we're just being mindful and thinking of them because if they were a town department, they would have had access to these funds. Since our regional health district, they really have to come and ask us. Um, but again, I think that this ties in very nicely to the intent of the money is right to help combat, you know, the um, the public health crisis.
No, that makes a lot of sense. And just, just to, just to save on a million questions down the road. And again, I know this is put together quickly and I I really like it. If we could just put the annual column and then the total, just make two separate columns so we have an idea, you know, what's, what's a one-time, what's a multi-year spend, how many years? Again, not suggesting that should have been done already. I get that everybody's in a crunch to get this stuff done, but that would at least to help me out.
Yeah, that's a great, great suggestion. We can definitely do that. I just say, probably should have opened up by saying, you know, again, this was sort of our second attempt at, you know, after, you know, talking with um, the Board of Ed, after talking with department heads, after listening to feedback um, from the community, you know, after having sort of an additional six months of of feedback and 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 data that, you know, we've been able to gather. This was again, sort of our attempt really just to try to help give you all something to react to, to really start to try to focus your energy again on things you might be interested in, things you think we should just throw away. Um, but again, we just really want to try to help generate some, some discussion and brainstorming for you all.
No, it's great.
Maria, I have a quick question. Um, with the Farmington Valley Health District, have, do you know our neighboring towns? Is is that number kind of on par with what, you know, other Farmington Valley towns are uh, contributing to the, to the health district? Um, you know, where's the communication kind of going on that?
Sure, so if we're asked for funding from them, again, the the ask will come on a proportional basis. So um, us, uh, Simsbury and Farmington, we are the largest towns by quite a bit. Um, so our proportional share will be higher than the remaining towns. Um, but what they did last time for us, which was again, very nice, is they, they shared a nice detailed list. We brought that to the Board of Selectmen. And again, anything is proportional, but our share will be um, essentially the largest or close to the largest because um, since we're in Farmington, our population numbers tend to just be very close. So to say we will, again, we'll either have the largest or the second largest contribution. But again, it will be proportional.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Good question. And the V and A, have they asked for anything? Is that, I I just, I didn't know if they've asked us.
You know, they have not made a direct ask to us. I think this is probably something Melissa and I could certainly follow up with our executive director. Um, I know they've been very grateful um, to us because they serve vulnerable populations and homebound populations. Um, we have been working with them on test kit and mask distribution um, and have had a few other checkpoints with them um, throughout the pandemic. Um, they also um, are part of our annual um, outside, you know, grant um, process. So they do receive for sort of normal activities um, that they do receive an allotment for um, from us. But again, since they are still actively helping with vaccination clinics and efforts with the homebound, um, this is probably, again, just a suggestion that I have, that probably Melissa and I should check in with them and and see how they're doing. And again, if they have any unmet needs related to the pandemic, since it is, you know, again, it's an agency providing public health services.
Okay. I I had a couple of other questions. The promise to Jordan, why, if if we have the 501(c)(3) program, um, is that a separate grant?
Sure, so you you may recall that uh, this past year, they submitted an outside agency grant um, application. Um, and that was not funded through the regular operating budget, but three-year on transfer. So they had asked for an amount of $3,000. So that's part of our normal, regular grant process. Um, and again, that was done through a year-end transfer. So my thought was is that if, you know, perhaps the board wanted to continue to um, to provide that grant um, separate from again, the the 501(c)(3) uh, additional grant program that you're looking at, um, that again, because they are working on substance abuse issues, um, that that might be an appropriate, appropriate use of um, those dollars.
Okay, but they'll still be applying through the, to to like the the grant request through the budget too, I would assume.
Right, and that's the outside agency grant. Um, that's the normal annual budget process there. And that's reflecting again, the five years um, that we would be able to do that. So $3,000 a year for five years.
Okay, so I was looking at it as a one-year a grant. And then anybody want to talk about the ambulance at all?
Sure, I can start and then maybe someone could jump in. Um, this was something, again, um, I had some conversations a little while back with um, SVAA's executive director, um, would just need to follow up. But there are, um, it's very interesting, um, since the COVID pandemic happened, there are some ambulances now that they're calling COVID, um, the industry's calling COVID-friendly ambulances, and just in terms of how they're designed, how they're outfitted. Um, and so again, this just might again, be a particular um, way to help again, support, um, support that agency and perhaps outfit, you know, an ambulance, um, that's really again suited very well for responding to this particular health crisis. So um, it's something that they have not made a formal ask. It was just conversations, but again, looking at potential, you know, public health uses for the dollars. And and I can do some more follow up on that.
I mean, I have a question about SVAA. I mean, they are a 501(c)(3), right? So like, they could apply through the grant program for money. I I assume if they feel like they have unmet needs related to COVID, I mean, it seems like, you know, that would be a reasonable possibility, right? They've been on the front line of having to to respond to this. So and and not just like the the ambulance is one item, but like, So and not just like the ambulance is one item, but like, just, I guess what I'm just trying to say is it does seem like they would be, they would have that opportunity to apply through that grant program.
I agree, Amber, my only concern is they get exhausted, so.
I know. But, but still, I mean, they, I mean, that's how it's set up, right?
Right.
It is and it isn't. I don't think when we initially set the 250, we were contemplating, Simsbury ambulance is necessarily part of that. I think you're right, that, you know, that we could. But we've had it, we've had discussions with Sandra Ramels, as Lisa knows and others, for a number of years about how, you know, do we contribute capital? Do we talk about operating? How do we review financials, et cetera? There's an ongoing discussion there. Because again, it is an outside agency, but they provide a required service for the town. So what's the best use just for that? I'll tell you honestly, I didn't contemplate them in the 250. I would think they would have come to us separate from that.
So. And also, if you just buy them an ambulance, is it going to sit in the parking lot? Or is somebody going to be staffing it and driving it? Like, do they have funds to?
They have to, they have to recycle their ambulances. They have to buy them like radio cop cars. So I, you know, I don't think we would buy them one that, for the sake of buying it, it would be within their replacement cycle.
And they don't have money right now to replace, as they was, now that I'm remembering that conversation. Does that make point?
They do set aside capital for it. I think it's a, it's a, it's that overarching discussion, Wendy, of, of, you know, if we're going to demand a higher level of service, as we've been having discussions about, you know, there's a cost that comes with that in terms of staffing and everything else. And is this a way to achieve that? You know, that's part of that overarching discussion. I think we're going to have with the board in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, so we, yeah, let's, I guess we should just wait till we have that discussion and really see what the, the needs are, right?
Just quickly, I wanted to just, Amber brought up a really good point, and I just wanted to share some information that I think will be helpful. I know, I think it was Melissa and I had spoken again with the ambulance association some time back. One of the things they expressed that they want to be extra, extra careful and cautious of is that if they've already applied through other rounds of stimulus or received funding through other rounds of stimulus, let's say to offset lost revenue, right? They're not then going to come and ask us to offset that revenue that they were already reimbursed for. And similarly, I know that Wendy EDC did some follow up this spring and early summer for us with some of the other nonprofits and educational institutions. They had shared that as well, is that they were rather fortunate and through other rounds of stimulus and opportunities available to them, that they were able through like the Paycheck Protection Program and, and other sorts of stimulus that they were pretty well taken care of. And that they do want to be careful and cautious to not double dip and ask essentially for reimbursement for the same expenses. So I think based on that, we might see rather limited applications under the nonprofit program would be my, would be my hunch.
Thanks, Maria, because that really kind of gets to what I'm thinking is, we just talked about the Farmington Valley Health District, right? And how we put a placeholder in for them. And so it seems like SVA would kind of fall under that same kind of idea, right? Of it's, it's a, an agency that, that we're working with that clearly is on the front lines and will have some COVID needs. So if they've already been addressed through other stimulus, that would be great. But if not, it seemed like we, we might see them. I was worried we might see them show up through the 501(c)(3) grant and not really be expecting that.
So we have five minutes left, right? We didn't get through the whole list here. I, I think that for, as far as like expanding this list, I think there's some good additions of, you know, column header headings, like what did Sean, you asked for an annual cost versus the full cost?
Yeah, I just, I think that would be interesting is this is the total ask versus, you know, and again, I don't think we need, you know, five rows for five years. But you know, this is the annual, it's 180, and they contemplated it's four and a half years. The way you explained it, Maria, I thought was perfect. Just so that we don't have to, in a month, when I forget the answer, I don't have to ask you the question again.
And a couple, a couple of things I would like to see, Melissa, and everybody can, this can evolve, but what's the source of the line item? Is it a Board of Selectmen goal? Is it from the, the town list? Is it a capital item? Is it from the Board of Ed? Just so we know, did it come from the public hearings? So we know where the idea originated. I don't know if people agree with that as an item. At least to make it something, so somebody just else on the board looking at this would know where the item came from. Anybody out there?
But if it's a good use of funds, I'm not sure I care where it came from, but sure.
Well, I think it's a good way to. I think, well, to me, it's a good way to track where it came from. Is it a CIP item in the current year? You know, that's one thing. And then another item that we don't have too, it kind of goes with the source, but what's the goal? Is it a priority for us at the Board of Selectmen? Does it line up with our goals? Is it just a COVID goal?
I think we would have to put that on there, wouldn't we?
Pardon me?
Wouldn't we have to put that on there, Wendy?
I'm just saying as a column, what is our priority? So when we work on it, we prioritize it eventually when it comes to the board.
Okay, so we would leave, just, okay.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to think ahead, how we best can look at a list and have the most data, right?
Not, not arguing, just understanding where the source is. So just to be clear, the six of us.
That would be for us to add a column, correct?
Okay, not arguing, just wanted to understand.
Yep, and then I do want to follow up on some of these. The cowork, the development, the permitting handbook, the restaurant map, tourism brochure. I don't know if those are, and then the coworking website keeps coming up and being told for not doing it. So I'm not sure. But Sean, you brought that up the other night. We already took that off of our goals, correct?
Yeah, but I think we're getting a presentation on it anyway. So again, I, I'm a bit confused on the whole topic, but we can, we can not, we don't know, we need to debate that here.
Okay, and then these other miscellaneous, I'm not sure, I don't know if these were on the original list or these, Maria, are these new ads?
Some of them were on the original list. I think we had said that we could explore, we thought some DEI opportunities. I believe something to that effect was on the original list. The library literacy outreach equipment is new. I don't believe we had that on the original list. But again, that was just some brainstorming that I had with our library director. I had also spoken with the Board of Ed about, again, just ways to try to help, you know, with kids catching, catching up on literacy during this really challenging time. Obviously, the fire district and housing authority at the public hearing had submitted letters to us. So that might be, again, since they are partners and stakeholders where we, where we work closely with them, it might be, you know, good for us to work with them to again, sort of determine if there's like a specific need that they have sort of to what, you know, Amber was, you know, sharing, for example, with the housing authority. If they lost revenue and they weren't able to get reimbursed for that, say, through a round of stimulus, that would be right, a good conversation for us to have with them and kind of understand what that, that number looks like. So there were a few things that I put in as, you know, question marks, because I just don't think we have a good answer yet. A few others, we just put in some placeholders. For example, the HVAC needs for town and Board of Ed, right? We know that there are some needs on both ends there. Those are sort of placeholder numbers. Some things are a little more specific where we have better estimates, like some of the foot bridges and the dam repairs that we talked about. And those again, were very heavily used, those outdoor spaces during the pandemic. One item I will just very quickly mention, this Simsbury Farms Playground Replacement. You may recall, we do actually have that in our current capital budget. One of the challenges we've seen, I think we've shared this with you all, is that we are seeing certain supply chain issues and demand issues having an effect on prices for certain things. And one of them is playground equipment. And so playground equipment has gone up by about 30 to 35%. And it's very substantial. So a number that we had not that long ago, that we had as part of last year's budgeting, that was a good number, is no longer a good, a good number. And we would probably need about 75,000 to really do that project properly. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to fully replace all of the place fee for putting up there. So that was one I did just want to flag, because I know it's one we talked about pretty extensively during the budget process last year. But that's an example where COVID has just again, made that, has made that cost really escalate. And it's just the industry and it's sort of just what, you know, what it is. I mean, another option would always be to perhaps take that additional amount out of the capital reserve. But again, our playgrounds are also used very heavily during COVID as a respite for families. So again, our thought was trying to, with some of the parks capital projects, was to really kind of try to balance, you know, all, all ages of our residents, right? From young children to maybe some of our older residents who might enjoy the pickleball courts, but to try to make that maybe as diverse of a group of residents as we could.
I love it. So Maria, and I don't know, Amber, if this is, if this is yours and Jackie's takeaway with the housing authorities, can we get that list similar to this, you know, this format for the housing authority sooner or later? Because I'd be willing, again, pending Amy's sign off and obviously board vote, but to expedite those, those funds to the housing authority and those folks. Because that feels, as you articulated, I think really well, Amber, that's an important place to help.
Yeah, I am happy to continue to talk to them and get some more details on this for us.
Yeah, and you know, the, the way you broke it out with, you know, the immediate needs, the losses, and then the capital items, because, you know, again, I think we're going to have to be careful with the capital side, not saying no, but I think we need to be careful there. But can we do some of the other things more quickly as we review that longer term?
Right.
Yeah, and I know they have had a big loss there, you know, especially, is it Virginia, what is the?
Conley Residence?
Virginia Conley. Thank you, I wanted to say something else, so I'm glad you did. But I know a lot of the residents, just with needing even the extra meal deliveries and not being able to, you know, just how it was set up for them for safety during COVID. I know that they were, they've been hurt badly. So I'm really interested to see what you come back with, Amber, on that.
Yep.
Correct.
Will do.
Thank you.
Maria, I have a quick question on the library. There were separate ARPA funds available just to libraries. I don't know if that's been exhausted, but you might not need to use town ARPA money. You might be able to use another avenue there, if that still is available.
Yeah, there were a couple of opportunities we did take advantage of through the library and museum ARPA money that was previously available. They might have to have Amber help with this one as well. But the really neat, I call them, they're like the Amazon lockers. We just got them, they were just installed at the library. It's really exciting because people will now be able to access their holes outdoors through the lockers 24/7, which is really exciting. And we did use an ARPA library grant for that, as well as the purchase of the really neat outreach book for the popular materials. I'm also really jazzed about that. So those were two opportunities that we were able to take advantage of through that library grant program. I don't know if this would follow within that. I can certainly follow up with Lisa. And Amber, I don't know if you have any other thoughts on that?
Um, well, and Heather can, can also address this, because she and I, we're both on libraries. Right, we both were, and she's still technically.
I'm the liaison right now.
So Heather can, can take that one. But I know one thing, Heather, that always came up in our meetings is, you know, we would hear from residents that use the library to do job searches, right? In that career center. And the lack of, of having laptops or laptops that they can check out. And I know that brings up issues for the library about maintaining them and things like that. But I just think that like, that's another place kind of where a, you know, a segment of our population really is relying on that to, to help with job searches and, and getting information. And so I don't know if there's any opportunities with that center there for expanded computer accessibility. We talked about hotspots, you know, things like that.
Yeah, those were items, the hotspot items, definitely big. I know, you know, that purchasing more computers or laptops a lot is, is not evenly for job searches. But I think, you know, we have a decent population of people who, you know, struggle to get to the library and somehow similar to a bookstore doors or a possibility of, or a way for something along those lines. But I just, you know, I know one that came up in a number of our meetings with the library board. I, it seemed like the maintenance and the logistics of it, you know, how that would actually work.
Yeah, and what's neat about this particular library literacy outreach equipment that Lisa was again brainstorming with staff on, is that there are, they're sort of like vending machines for popular materials. And again, because Terrifil is somewhat geographically isolated from the rest of the community, you know, a thought we had was, you know, could we purchase, you know, essentially, I'll call them up, a library vending machine for books that we could then have located in Terrifil that people could again, access, you know, books on site in that neighborhood. And they would again, reserve that, you know, through the whole system, et cetera. But that was again, just another, you know, neat piece of equipment that we thought that could again, help with literacy. And, and yeah, so that's again, something that maybe we could explore a little more, but I thought that was a neat idea.
Wendy, do you want to forward the 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Process to the full board for review and vote?
Yep, you read my mind. Sounds like everybody's on board with doing that. So I don't see what we're, we'd be waiting for anymore at this point.
Okay. And I appreciate everybody's work on this. I know there's been a ton of review and staff time, legal time, everything else, so.
Can I just ask, I saw the line item for businesses, and I believe, was it 250 or 350?
And this is, it's.
250.
But you know, when you look at the, the allocation, I was just wondering, is that just a placeholder or have we really had a real idea of? Because, you know, the businesses, they have been, her, I saw on it that not only is it restaurants and health facilities, but in addition, that's not on there. I mean, you just have general clothing boutiques and things like that that obviously greatly suffered. I think we have a bridal shop in town. I mean, those sort of places. And what's, what, like, where does that 250 come from? Because it looks like when you look at the bottom, that almost the entire 7 million is allocated or somewhat line item. And so I guess that's where I look at, where do we get the 250 from? Or, or is it more? We have a lot more businesses than we realize in town.
So I, I think that was a starting point. Heather, the challenge is, is much like the conversation with the ambulance and the library, is we can't double and triple dip with the businesses either. It's got to be, it's got to be independent of, of the other programs that are out there. And it's the same is true with the nonprofits, right? So correct me if I'm wrong, Maria, but that was essentially a starting point, that we're like the third or fourth wheel of stimulus or grants when it, when it comes to the businesses. Not that there's not a need, but it's got to be over and above what they've already been helped with.
Got it, understood, okay.
And this was, well, I was going to say, this was Sarah Nielsen presented these to us. And Maria, you can, you can weigh in if we've gotten any formal proposal from her.
Not yet, but that was a thought, was that if we were to do a business grant program, is that perhaps we could contract with Main Street to administer that program for us? Similarly, if we were to move forward with a facade revolving room program, that perhaps we could contract with her agency to administer that for us. That was something earlier on during stimulus, I had reached out to the Connecticut Main Street Center for some information about facade revolving room programs. That was one that was of particular sort of interest to me, because that's, again, one of the areas I thought that we could actually make a real long-term investment in the community. So similar to say, a CBVG Housing Rehab Program, right? The thought is, you loan out this money at no cost, but then it gets repaid to you. And then when it's repaid to you, you can free loan it back out into the community at no cost. And so to me, this was again, sort of an interesting, you know, I think, concept that, again, it helps with some maybe short-term needs that some of our, our local businesses may have, but may not have the hands right, or I'm sorry, the money in hand at the moment to make those improvements. But that when they are in a better position and pay that back, we're able to then loan that money back out to the community. And that was one again, I thought those just really need to maybe have that very kind of like long-term positive effect on our business community.
And Heather, the amounts came from Sarah.
That's great, she, I'm sure she has a good.
I don't think we made them up.
No, the method to the madness as well is, is the attempt to us to do the nonprofits and the businesses sooner rather than later, while we were more long-term thoughtful on the capital. So that if, I think where you're going, Heather, if we needed, and what Amber asked before, if we need to go put another 250 or 500 in there, we can prioritize that before other items. Because that, that's the whole method to not spending it all this budget cycle in the next six months, right?
And how would the nonprofits and the small businesses, you know, so once you have the money allocated into this grant, how can they, how can businesses access it? Is, is, will they have some sort of application process themselves? Will there be a time?
Yeah, that's all in our packet. That's, that's everything that we're going to present to the board.
Oh, perfect, okay, great.
Yeah, so we've got a, there's a whole audit schedule. There's, they've got to live up to the same standards that we do, so that everything's good. So that Amy's good, we're good, and that my friend Lisa doesn't get mad at us for exposing the taxpayers to any financial risk.
I'm looking forward to the presentation, thanks.
Yeah, no, they're all good questions.
Amy, you made this really scary. The rules, the compliance rules are like, better do this or you.
These are easy, you can at least understand them.
Okay, so the only next step I have here is we need a regular meeting schedule. So we don't fall off or, you know, the calendar.
When do you want to meet?
I'm, well, it depends on other meeting conflicts, I guess. I know you like to meet at five or eight.
Really, I'll meet at five or seven, but I'll meet halfway on eight.
No eight, no seven, no seven. I don't think Amy buys a seven either.
Hey, the meetings are less than an hour when you meet at 7:00 AM. Trust me. There's an advantage to them. You get to the point.
All right. Well, should we send some ideas or do this? Listen to us bicker back and forth.
We, yeah, let's send some ideas. But I had again, I, I am biased towards this Monday because again, the team is already in the building. So I don't want to have folks necessarily have to come in for another night meeting, if we can try to do that. So.
My, well, every other is like, we have agenda setting and then we have a select minute, as long as it's before a selectman meeting, which is tough too. I think that's tough. So.
Or after agenda prep or whatever. Yeah. Just try to, try to be sensitive to having folks have their nights taken up too many times.
Okay. All right. We'll try to get something on for the week of the 14th. Well, that's a selectman meeting, but like two weeks. If we should try to meet every two weeks, I think would be good going forward.
First and third.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So I, I'm going to move to adjourn. Anybody second?
Special meetings.